Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the School Board. And I call this Administration Informal and Workshop Session to Order on March 11th, 2025 at 4:00 PM. At this time, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Brown, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
And Ms. Dwyer is just now walking in, and Ms. Williams is on her way in traffic. At this time, we have our School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. First, there is the Student Advisory Council at Kempsville High School next week on March 20th. That's a Thursday from 3:15 to 5:00 PM. Dr. Robertson runs that and would like two School Board members to represent. So if two Board members are available, we kind of do a rotation, as Ms. Williams and I did last month. Please let Dr. Robertson know. Do you need me to repeat the date and time? Date? It's the Student Advisory Council. It is March 20th at 3:15 to 5:00 PM, Kempsville High School, and we can have two Board members. It is a rolling monthly event, so whoever doesn't get the opportunity to go this time will have a chance in the future. Do any other Board members have anything to report? Ms. Rogers?
Okay, so yesterday, Mr. Callen and I were privileged to sit in a meeting with the State Superintendent, Dr. Lisa Coons, regarding the School Performance and Support Framework. I don't have the slide deck yet, and I'm going to be sending out an email that has the slide deck with most of my notes. I think some of the big takeaways are that they are going to be looking to give... Well, first, they changed the Support Framework so that instead of having our accreditation based solely on student achievement on the SOLs as a pass/fail, it's going to be weighted based on mastery, basic, and so forth. So students who even sit for the exams will get points for even sitting for the exam, and so it will help some of our students that are... And some of our schools that have students that are having to take the test more than one time and struggling. I think one of the biggest questions that I had was whether or not we were going to be accounting for and supporting students who are in socioeconomic statuses that are lower. And she said yes, that they do have supports for that in place. And then also, they are looking to have students earn points for multiple experiences. And one of the big ones that I was really looking at was experience in real-world work opportunities. So that has not yet been approved. They're putting it through the state level, and it has to go and get approved at the federal level. But that is something that they're looking at, which I think is really awesome. Mike, did you want to add to that?
I would love to add to that. Thank you. My takeaway is from a different perspective, and the notes that I collected were as follows. First of all, we did have three representatives from the Virginia Department of Education, Dr. Lisa Coons and a Dr. Armstrong, as well as a Mark Jennings, who seemed to be the statistician behind the scenes connecting all the dots. As they shared, the primary goal of what they're doing is to serve students by setting high expectations, displaying transparency, and getting the students to educational levels whereby they're achieving or obtaining mastery or proficiency. They've got a very robust website that they refer to as a resource hub on the VDOE website. And they have within it a framework overview, a school data toolkit. There are supports for students, supports for families, and supports for teachers all on this resource hub. There are four areas that are being considered for focus. There is mastery, growth, readiness, and for those in high school, graduation itself. And the three levels of schooling, obviously, that are impacted by this are elementary, middle, and high. Readiness is measured by the three E's that they refer to, which are seeking to point people towards future gains of employment, gainful employment, I should say, enlistment in the military, or enrollment in colleges. And the process ends up leading to four categories that you end up being categorized within, whether either as a student or as a school itself. And they are distinguished, on track, off track, and in need of intensive support. And the really encouraging thing that I hear when this is discussed is that if students or schools are struggling, they're not shamed, they're not categorized as fails, there's no consideration of closing them. It's if you're struggling, we're rolling up our sleeves and adding a significant level of support in order to help get you where you need to be. But it's a team effort, and it's really impressive to see them describe it. When all is said and done, I came away with the feeling that this is a substantive process. It's meaningful, it's transparent, and for the benefit of the community, it's very understandable when you walk away from it. So that was my high-level overview.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, and we will move on to our first presentation. We welcome Dr. Sarah Lockett, our Director of Technical and Career Education, for a presentation on CTE and Work-Based Learning Overview.
Try that again. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Williams, Member of the Boards, and Dr. Robertson. As you just heard, I'm Dr. Sarah Lockett, and I'm honored to be here today to share an overview of the valuable resources and opportunities offered at our schools to support career and technical education and workforce development. I'm just sorry, I just realized I had the clicker. Conversations about workforce development and career and technical education often focus on our CTE centers. However, I think it's important to take a look at the big picture of where career and technical instruction is taking place in our schools before we focus on the centers and other institutes where CTE expansion is strategically planned. Virginia Beach's End-of-Year 2024 Secondary Enrollment Demographic Report for Career and Technical Education submitted to the Virginia Department of Education showed that our secondary students filled over 36,000 seats in career and technical elective classes last school year. So where do we find those seats? About 1,325 of them are in intensive half-day programs at our CTE centers. The rest are at our middle and high schools. Our elementary learners are not included in this enrollment count. However, professional school counselors and dedicated elementary school teams are diligently cultivating career awareness with our youngest students. Virginia Beach Elementary School students are able to participate in career fairs, a STEM Day at Naval Air Station Oceana during the airshow, tours of our CTE centers and secondary programs. And new this year, they will have access to hands-on activities with more than 20 industry partners in a career fair at our STEM Trifecta Day on May 14th. Specific career-focused instruction and course options become available when our students enter the sixth grade. In middle school, classes are offered to encourage exploration of careers, financial skills, engineering, coding, computers, and culinary arts. Students can even earn high school credit through two half-credit business electives while in middle school. Middle school students are engaged in career interest and aptitude assessments through school-wide advisory blocks and begin making choices about what paths to pursue in high school. When students enter high school, the focus of their studies adds skill attainment to the exploratory experiences they had in middle school. For students who don't aspire to join one of the Division's Academy programs or to spend a half-day at one of our CTE centers, Virginia Beach Schools offers a wide variety of elective courses at each of our high schools. In fact, the majority of seats available in CTE classes are found in our comprehensive high schools. In a school division this size, programs integrated into our high school buildings are necessary to bring high-quality career and technical electives to every student. To put this in perspective, each of our high schools offers more seats in CTE electives than either of our CTE centers, and most offer more seats than both centers combined. For this reason, a focus on modernizing spaces and recruiting and retaining highly qualified instructors for workforce efforts in our high school buildings is equally important to the attention that we give our CTE centers and academies. We will revisit this concept when we talk about students who may not be accepted to one of the specialized programs. This slide highlights the courses available to our students at their home high schools. You can see versions of programs available at our centers are also found here, things like culinary arts, catering, and construction tech. Programs at our high school sites are generally one credit and one block per class and do not require students to travel. Each CTE class is part of a two-credit sequence that meets the sequential elective requirement for graduation and meets the requirements for CTE program completion that support the three-E accountability standards for schools that you just heard about. Like the ATC and Tech Center programs, these courses offer work-based learning opportunities, dual enrollment, and connection with professionals in the community. For example, students in marketing classes are immersed in student-run school store operations as part of the marketing curriculum. Students research products, order merchandise, create displays. They work on creating work schedules for the stores. They make sales, and they analyze sales and financial data. Partners from the business community support these activities and come into our school buildings regularly. So let's move on to our first center. Virginia Beach is fortunate to be the home of not one, but two prestigious CTE centers. The Technical and Career Education Center on North Landing Road opened its doors in 1972 and has a more than 50-year history of preparing students for high-wage and demand career fields. Over the last 50-plus years, the building and industrial equipment have been continuously maintained and upgraded as programs evolved and new programs were added. The ongoing modernization of programs has depended on a mix of local, state, federal, and private funding. The Tech Center currently offers 23 programs with 737 students attending each day this semester. To demonstrate the evolution of career programs, I can share that the newest initiative at the center was an expansion of the welding program in the fall of 2024. This expansion was funded through the Regional Maritime Training System with over $2 million in funding from the Navy renovating and outfitting our second lab at the center. This new space brought the latest technologies to students. And it is also important to note that the welding program is one of two programs at the center currently dual-enrolled with Tidewater Community College, both welding and early childhood education, late-to-career studies certificates from TCC. Also noteworthy, the Almanac of Practical Nursing has consistently ranked the Center School of Practical Nursing as the number-one program in Virginia based on a perfect record of NCLEX pass rates, that's the certification test for our LPNs, for more than the last decade. Tech Center students participate in internships and are supported by a dedicated professional school counselor and a school-to-work transition specialist. The Tech Center also is home to a vocational evaluation program, which allows students to come to the center on a referral basis before applying to try tasks from different programs to be evaluated for aptitude and interest. Last year, the Tech Center received more than 1,000 applications for 559 available seats in first-year and one-year programs. This number was reduced to 955 eligible applications. Most classes at the Tech Center require students to be a rising junior. Applications that were rejected as ineligible were based on age or grade level. They did not qualify. The Tech Center continues to take applications on a rolling admissions basis all the way through the first week of school in an attempt to fill every seat each year. When applying students choose a first... Applying students choose a first, second, and third-choice program, approximately 120 students were offered a seat at the Tech Center last year and later declined the offer. The reasons for decline in an offer varied. Some students could not fit the Tech Center program into their schedule. Some indicated their interest had changed. But it is important to note that the reasons that students may choose to decline an offer can be complex and very different from student to student. In all, 332 students were not offered a seat in response to their application. These students have the opportunity to enroll in one of the great options at their home high school. The September 30 snapshot from the master schedule election shows that 503 students enrolled in first-year and one-year programs at the Tech Center in the fall of 2024, and that the center was at 89.98% of its capacity for these first-year and one-year programs. Now, let's take a look at the second CTE center, the Advanced Technology Center on the TCC campus in Virginia Beach at our Learning Laboratory at Lynn Haven Mall. This center, known as the ATC, is a shared space that was built and continues to be maintained by a partnership between Tidewater Community College, the schools, and the city. This center is home to 499 students who take classes from a mix of Virginia Beach and TCC faculty. Students who choose the ATC attend a program for half of the school day every day during either the morning or the afternoon session. Like the Tech Center, the ATC programs continuously evolve based on new technologies and local workforce demand. Updates and new programs at the ATC are also funded by a mix of local, state, federal, and private monies. The most recent example is $500,000 in funding from the Bayport Credit Union Foundation, Huntington Eagles Gives, and Ferguson Cares awarded to Virginia Beach Education Foundation in December of 2022 to support the opening of the ATC's Renewable Energy Technologies Program. That funding gave this program a jump on funding equipment, furniture, training, outreach, and our new career signing day. Currently, the ATC offers 17 programs, and students have several opportunities for dual enrollment taught by ATC or TCC faculty. These are noted on the slide. The center will add two new programs in the fall of '25, and we will highlight those later in the presentation. Last year, the ATC took in more than 831 applications for 354 available seats in first-year and one-year programs. Students may enroll at the ATC as early as ninth grade, but some courses like veterinary science have grade or age-level requirements. The ATC also continues to take applications on a rolling admissions basis all the way through the first week of school if seats are available. When applying, students also make a first, second, and third choice. This year, approximately 77 students were offered seats at the ATC and then later declined that offer. The September 30 snapshot from the master schedule election shows 323 students enrolled in first-year and one-year programs at the ATC in the fall of 2024, and the center was at 91.2% of capacity for these first-year and one-year programs. 182 students were not offered a seat in response to their ATC application. Analyzing the 182 applications where admission was not offered to the ATC and similarly declined applications at the Tech Center, we find that a small number met program requirements, but many showed areas where the application could be stronger. Areas like attendance, GPA, the student essay, and teacher recommendations indicated that the applicant was more likely to struggle in a specialized program than the accepted students. Students that do not get a seat at one of the centers still have strong options at their home high school. And let's take a look at work-based learning experiences in general across the Division last year. 4,533 high school students completed work-based learning experiences related to a course they were enrolled in at our high schools or CTE centers. This is more than a 350% increase in work-based learning over the '22-'23 school year. These experiences were largely tied to internships, school-based enterprise or school stores, entrepreneurship, service learning, and co-op experiences. As this slide shows, most of the experiences were unpaid, and our numbers do not include the part-time jobs that many of our students work unrelated to the school day. All in all, high school students completed over 96,000 hours of work-based learning outside of their regular classrooms and had more than $1.2 million in economic impact on our city. As our partners in Richmond work to redefine work-based learning for the Commonwealth this year, my team is regrouping and looking for ways to ensure that VBCPS continues to create opportunities that both expose students to the world of work and support accountability standards for schools under the new three-E framework. One of the tools that we need to do this is a system that can replace our Career Exploration and Academic and Career Planning Platform, Major Clarity, and the software we currently use to support and document work-based learning experiences. That's a program called Vector. Providing the functions of these two systems under one platform is a priority for both the Office of Technical and Career Education and the Office of Student Support Services. It will allow us to more fluidly create experiences and anticipate student needs. As you can see, our high school students have many options to prepare for future careers. These options are created with vast amounts of community input. Carl D. Perkins funding accepted by Virginia Beach Schools for Career and Technical Education requires that we maintain an advisory board. The resulting General Advisory Council for Technical and Career Education is made up of community stakeholders, including industries tied to nationally-recognized career clusters, economic development staff, leadership from the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, and higher education. Membership is appointed to three-year terms by the School Board each spring. Members of this group give input at quarterly meetings, but also work one-on-one with Division staff to help shape our programs. In addition to the General Advisory Council, Dr. Robertson formed the Virginia Beach Schools Community Roundtable. This group includes another cross-section of industry, government, and higher education. The members of this group include key leaders who move our programs and our region forward. Recently, our neighbors in Chesapeake have also joined this group, making it an even stronger workforce development think tank. In 2023, this board specifically asked to be more engaged in workforce development, leading to the creation of an ad hoc workforce committee led by Mrs. Williams and Vice Mayor Rosemary Wilson. The purpose of the ad hoc workforce committee is to bring together stakeholders to explore workforce expansions. Last year, this group was able to secure funding for a series of CTE-focused informational videos that are available on the Division's YouTube channel and were highlighted for the public during CTE Month in February. I personally have sent these videos to military parents exploring what we offer as they think about moving to Virginia Beach and to the Virginia Beach Office of Economic Development to share via their website with businesses considering making Virginia Beach home to their business operations. If you haven't seen them all, I encourage you to check out these videos. These three advisory groups tackle tough questions from diverse perspectives and ensure that we have the right advisors on hand to create workforce opportunities. Many members of each group are VBCPS parents, and the mission of the advisory groups is deeply important to them. Working in tandem, they have been able to refine initiatives from multiple perspectives with powerful results. Also on this slide is just a sampling of other organizations that we depend on in our workforce development efforts. Each of these organizations is represented in the three advisory groups listed at the top of the slide. So this brings me to the most exciting part of today's presentation, and that is what's new and what's next. The Office of Technical and Career Education is grateful for the addition of a 10-month work-based learning specialist who joined our team in the fall. This new position has allowed for greater networking with the business community, and this person has taken the lead on the career exploration event tied to the STEM trifecta and the career signing day, both happening in May of this year. With the great success of our first welding lab expansion at the Tech Center, the School Board approved a new one-credit welding class for the spring of '26 that will be focused... I mean, that will be housed in a second newly renovated space at the Renaissance Academy and open to all high school students and students at the Renaissance Academy. The Adult Learning Center will also have access to offer classes in the space after school hours. This expansion is supported with a pledge of $2.5 million in funding from the Navy and our partners with Blue Forge Alliance. We are excited to see the construction begin later this year. Early in the presentation, I shared that 332 students were not offered a seat at the Tech Center in the fall of '24. The new one-credit welding class and creation of this third lab is directly attributed to data about students who applied for seats in welding, were qualified for those seats, and were not able to secure one. This example is important because industry is also in great need of workers with welding skills and suggested that we create a shorter-term program to accommodate a larger number of students. The one-credit class is double-blocked for just one semester versus the two years. A student must commit for the six-credit welding program at the Tech Center. Both programs are valuable to industry in our region and provide diverse options for students. They also will help us to find seats for every student who wants a place in a welding class. Curriculum and course offerings are the heart of what we do. With help from industry, the Hampton Roads Workforce Council, and middle school staff, our technology education, six, seven, and eight curriculums were transformed in canvas to a module-based curriculum tied specifically to careers like manufacturing, shipbuilding, and biotechnology. Middle schools received $300,000 in new equipment last year, such as virtual welding simulators, 3D printers, and CNC routers. If you caught the episode of Nicole's Adventures at the end of February, you saw students on a field experience with QED systems that is tied to this new curriculum. Transportation for that field trip was provided by the Hampton Roads Workforce Council through our middle school maritime exploration grant. Each middle school has access to this type of meaningful experience to help students narrow down their elective choices. The last area of focus for CTE expansion is dual enrollment in career-focused programs, and these are important for several reasons. Firstly, allow students to try a college course for the first time. Secondly, dual enrollment in career studies certificate programs often has a lower GPA requirement, making it more accessible to more students. These programs support accountability measures for our high schools through the three-E framework. And lastly, our partners often supply highly qualified faculty and equipment at an affordable price. This board approved five new CTE-focused dual enrollment opportunities last fall. The Aviation Institute of Maintenance and Medical Assisting will be offered by our partner... I mean, Aviation Maintenance and Medical Assisting will be offered by our partners at the Aviation Institute of Maintenance and Centura College. Each will be taught on their campus with their faculty. Each of these accredited programs are beyond the scope of what we could easily add in our facilities with our staff. If we look at just medical assisting with Centura College and think back to earlier slides about students who might not have been offered a seat in an allied health program at the Tech Center, we knew that there was a need for more seats based on request, and our partners in the healthcare industry and at the Hampton Roads Workforce Council concurred. With the new dual enrollment partnership with Centura, we have created 20 seats per year for medical assisting, and Bayside High School alone has returned 100 requests for those seats. When we combined that with what we learned from our partners... If when we combined what we learned from our partners with the student interest of this type, I can assure you that creating more opportunities in this area is the top of my task list. As you can see, Tidewater Community College will also open their doors and provide Virginia Beach sections of emergency medical services in the fall of 2025 to help fill this need. VBCPS will also begin offering dual enrollment with TCC for paralegal training this fall, and the ATC will be dual-enrolling renewable energy technologies, leveraging the existing instructor and equipment in that program. As you can see, the scope of career and technical education in Virginia Beach is immense. Over 36,000 seats, multiple locations, millions of dollars in funding requirements each year are needed to run, maintain, and modernize these programs. The question that I'm sure is on everyone's mind is how are these programs supported financially? The answer is that the support is an integral patchwork for public and private funding, and a large part of my job is securing funding outside of our local budget. Later this month, you will see a separate presentation for the local plan for spending federal Carl D. Perkins funding. Perkins is a major source of ongoing funding for CTE programs. In all, the Office of Technical and Career Education currently manages more than 10 separate grants to fund our efforts. A sample of those grants and our local funding are on your screen and give you an idea about the dollars that are supporting workforce efforts in the current school year. Items highlighted in blue are local funds. All other items are grants, and the lines highlighted in yellow are one-time funds that we will not see again in future years. Just over $3 million supports workforce-focused instruction, professional development for teachers, equipment, and industry credential testing at our secondary schools and centers. That figure does not include the $2.5 million for the welding lab expansion at Renaissance Academy. Before we conclude this presentation, I'd like to share the challenges that we face. Each of these realities is tied to expanding workforce opportunities for our students. The first is that expansion in our CTE centers is bound by multiple factors. One of the most concrete is space. Both the ATC and the Tech Center have programs in all available classroom spaces. Center directors and the team in my office pay close attention to program enrollment, space utilization, and industry trends to ensure that VBCPS is making the most of the available spaces. The team has been able to get creative and have our dual enrollment partners like TCC, the Aviation Institute of Maintenance, and Centura College offer new courses in their spaces to mitigate this problem. The solution also addresses the need to expand dual enrollment and places some new dual enrollment programs in parts of the city that don't have easy access to existing CTE centers. This same line of thinking was used to choose Renaissance Academy as the location for our third welding lab. and home to the upcoming one-credit Introduction to Welding course. Space for courses that support workforce development is not just an issue at CTE centers. There is fierce competition for space in our secondary schools. Communicating with new and existing building leaders that purpose-built technology education shops and classrooms must exist for world-class programs is an ongoing challenge as we work to find space for all, as those administrators work to find space for all activities that happen in a school. VB CPS continues to see an unprecedented number of hard staff openings in CTE classrooms. For the last two years, we have included $5,000 hiring incentives for CTE teachers in our Carl D. Perkins grant, and we'll continue, we'll do that again this year. While this incentive helps attract new hires, staffing remains a top concern. In terms of expansion, we have to consider whether VB CPS can adequately staff CTE instructional positions for new programs. This concern has been part of the catalyst to expand with dual enrollment partners who can provide instructors to supplement our own efforts. From a budget perspective, rising costs for consumable materials used in CTE classrooms have skyrocketed. This includes food, medical supplies, building materials, and much more. In addition to consumable supplies, our teams continue to struggle to stay on top of replacing and upgrading computer labs in our high school sites. Another reality that impacts expanding workforce programs is our dependence on grants and donations. Dependence on grant funding leaves programs vulnerable to changing economic, the changing, to changing economic priorities of our grant funders. The last reality is competition for student interest in enrollment. Just because we build it doesn't mean that students will enroll. There is competition among programs, and students in Virginia Beach are fortunate to have many choices. Each of these realities leaves our team careful, to carefully consider each program before we do a new expansion. To wrap up our discussion of opportunities connecting students to workforce, I'd be remiss not to highlight the opportunities offered by our academies in the form of three advanced academic programs at the Math Science Academy at Ocean Lakes, the International Baccalaureate Program at Princessiana, the Gover system Academy at Landstown, also five theme-based academies, Health Science Academy at Bayside, Legal Studies at First Colonial, Entrepreneurship and Business at Kempsville, the Visual and Performing Arts Academy at Salem, and the World's, World Languages Academy at Tallwood, a public charter program at Greenrod High School, the Achievable Dream Academy, and the Environmental Studies Program at the Brock Center. Each year, these programs enroll approximately 3,500 of our high school students. If you combine these numbers with what is offered at our CTE programs at the ATC and the tech center and with dual enrollment partners, we are providing specialized career-connected programming to well over 5,000 high school students each year. These amazing programs do not overshadow the importance of CTE electives offered in each high school building that serve more than three times the number of students. To keep these programs strong, we must continue to think creatively about hiring, compensating, developing, and retaining CTE teachers. We must continue to work to, to support work-based learning in our schools and in the community, and we must embrace new opportunities. We must continue to engage with the business community, and we must continue to communicate with our families. I look forward to each member of this board being a partner in that work. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Give my colleagues just a moment. Does anyone have any questions? Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you. Not a question, but oh my goodness, keep rocking and rolling.
Thirty years long.
Oh my goodness, you've been so busy, and I'm just, you know, focusing on just this one slide, Slide nine. And it is just amazing what we have been able to accomplish this last year, the, the videos, the, to increase the work-based learning and learning experiences by over 350%. The new lab at Renaissance Academy, the middle school technology, and then all of the expanded enrollment classes, aviation and the medical assisting, and it goes on and on. It's just amazing, and I'm so glad that this board has, along with staff, has, has listened to the community and has listened that we need to go forward and really enhance our workforce development and those opportunities for our student. So what, job well done, job well done, and I'm really excited that the three committees, like you said, the General Advisory Council, the Community Roundtable, Roundtable, and the Ad Hoc Committee. It's so nice to see them work together because so often when you have, whether it's, you know, any kind of goal, you have so many groups working on different stuff, and they never come together. And I think that's why we were accomplished so much, that these three groups worked in tandem and really worked together. So I really do appreciate that and hope that we can duplicate that practice in other areas. My question is, do we have, what's the latest date, and I know we haven't, and I know you probably don't have it with you, of how many students are attending college the year after they graduate and completing college in five years? If I could get that back at some point, that would be very interesting.
I would get that to you.
Yeah.
I think it's self-reported, but we, we can get that to you.
Okay, okay.
Some of it, but there's clearinghouse data, so yeah, we'll pull, we'll pull that.
Okay, perfect. And again, Dr., Sarah, just thank you so much for all the work that you're doing. I, I know, I am in meetings with this lady, and she's just like non-stop, and I, I love listening to all your ideas, and, and you're just doing a great job. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers.
Hi, thank you again. I just had two quick questions. For the application process, you talked about students who decline the offer. Do you guys have like a waiting list that you pull from? Like, I know that the regular academies, that students like apply to like four academies, and they have to pick one, that then you have someone off the waiting list. Do you guys do the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure that we're not.
We have the first, second, and third choice, you know, with courses at the centers, because oftentimes students are wavering, so sometimes they're not offered a first, but they might be offered a second. And sometimes the student really only wants the first. They put the other two down, they'd ask to be on a waitlist. And then sometimes they get on a waitlist for longer, and that's part of working really hard to make sure we fill, you know, every one of those seats that we can, and that's also the reason why we continue to take those applications all the way up through the, the start of the school year.
Excellent, because I know how popular those programs are with the students. A lot of students are like, I've applied in, applied in, I just can't seem to get in, and I know it's extremely popular. The other question that I have that you mentioned was that you are, you guys are talking about having new software to document your work-based learning. Do you know when that was last updated? I'm just curious. And if you don't, it's okay.
No, that's okay. Gosh, I think we've been using Major Clarity for about eight years. And, and it's updated over time, and we're just finding it's, it's not meeting our needs in the way that it used to.
Yeah.
And, and I don't, I don't know when it was last updated, but the, the company's been sold. So, so there, there are better options out there today, and we've been using Vector as well, but there, there's great value in connecting academic and career planning and what we're doing with work-based learning and how we're tracking students, the requirements that they get in middle school for career exploration.
Yes.
You know, kind of track that and do that all in one system, that we're going to be a little more agile in reporting and a little more agile in going, hey, where is this interest really lie? And that's data that we can use to make programmatic decisions.
Right. I just didn't know if it was something, like, like you said, if the company's been sold, we're going to have to actually do something switching.
And there's a lot, there's a lot of choices out there. It's just, we, we've kind of realized for us it's a priority to try to get them under one roof, but that's my office and, and the Office of Student Support Services, and then we'll see if, you know, it works out that way, but there are definitely other options when we start to, you know, look at competitive bids for that kind of stuff.
Well, I want to echo Mrs. Williams. You guys are doing an amazing job. I know that, I know people outside the state that look at these programs, and they talk about how incredible it is that we can offer so much workforce learning to our students before they even think about graduating, and it also gives them the opportunity to decide before they even step foot into the real world, do I like this, do I not, is this the direction I want to go? And that's really what I feel like our focus should be, is not just end of graduation, but can you be a contributing person to our community? And so I love that we do this. Thank you.
Ms. Felton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wow. Wow, we've come a long way since Classroom on the Mall.
We still have it. It's just in Lynn Haven now, not Pembroke.
And we moved to, we moved to Lynn Haven.
We're in Lynn Haven.
Exactly. I was there when we were negotiating, trying to get Lynn Haven Mall to be the, the next appropriate place to have this. And I was just thinking about some of the students that were students with Classroom on the Mall, and they're doing exceptionally well, entrepreneurs, doing really great. Your name still come up here now and then. I'd just like to say, great work.
Thank you.
Especially with the internships that we are doing. I am, I am a advocate for internships, and our students having that on-hand opportunity. And I'd just like to say, for every opportunity that, that I have had to be with the students, even when I had to put my boots on, walk out in the muddy ground as they were opening up to build another house, I was there. It was just phenomenal, and the enthusiasm of the students and how they got into it. And, and our partners that we had there, different partners from the community, plumbers, electricians, engineer that came in to give their hand-on experience with our students going in and coming out. I am godly proud of this program. I'm loving it. I like what it's doing. So many questions came to mind, but this one question I would ask to you about the nursing program that we have that is top-notch. Anyone that has not been to the graduations should go and carry your cleaners with you when you go. Very emotional as they have moved through, and they have become a family within that nursing department. But that's, that's all our program. But what I'm going to ask to, what other, and if you can't answer it now, what other medical institution have you moved out to? I know some of them were going to Centera and VMS. Are we moving towards other ones as well?
We've expanded our partnership with CHKD.
Okay.
And, and that's helped us with clinical rotations. Clinical rotations are a problem, you know, across the region with finding enough of them, not just for us, but for higher ed partners. And so we've been really fortunate enough that, that CHKD has opened their doors to us. So, you know, we're in a good spot with that, so we appreciate them.
I just want to do the shout for my grandson who's at the Technical and Career Engineering Center with the welding. He is now a welder for shipping. He's doing really great. He's really, and he's promoting himself up to the level of trying to be a manager. So thank you for that opportunity.
Mr. Bowenstein.
Thank you for your presentation, and I just want to say that CTE is something that is very important. One of my programs I'm working at, as well as all the other academies and alternative programs we have. But the question is, one is on Slide 10, HRWC.
Yes, Hampton Roads Workforce Council.
Okay. And then the maritime, then you have an out-of-school youth funding?
We do. It's a, it's a program for students who have separated and not transitioned, and I think we have had that program for out-of-school youth, gosh, more than a decade at this point. So it's students who come back in. We, if they didn't graduate, we work on getting them the GED. We work on functional reading and math skills. It includes a work-based learning requirement for them. They get wraparound services to help to make sure that they're meeting their benchmarks. And of course, our goal is for them to get a diploma and to get a full-time, unsubsidized employment with one of our regional employers. And, and they fund that entire program for us, including all the support for students. And we do a lot with a little bit of money, but it makes a big difference in those students' lives.
Right. And then you also, I believe you said the middle school maritime, that funding was just for one year?
Well, they, it was equipment funding.
Oh, okay. So it's something that's not really going to come in play so much down the road.
So the, the funding that we bought equipment with, which is why I say that's a one-year, it may come back around, but it's not an ongoing grant, so I highlighted it. And we also have funding for those buses. If you saw Nicole's adventure, they showed up in a really nice snazzy tour bus. You had expectations up, but the workforce council paid for that tour bus. We did not.
I was, I was just curious of like what was going to happen when the money ran out, but if it was like a purchase, then it's going to last a while.
We may have to rent a school bus next time around.
Alrighty, thank you.
Don't tell the younger kids.
Ms. Dwyer.
Thank you. That, that's really inspiring. I'm seeing all this for the first time, and especially, you've gone above and beyond raising a lot of this money to, just so we can have all of this. I saw aviation. Is space next?
Could be. You never know. I, I have an uncle who's an astronaut. It's near and dear to my heart.
Okay, so that, is that a pet course of yours?
We actually do have aerospace at, at Landstown at the Governor's Seminary Academy. There's an aerospace one and an aerospace two.
I'd love to see it come here.
Come on over.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Cummings.
Yeah, thank you so much for sharing. It's, I love, you know, hearing about workforce development, and it's something that I hold close to my heart. And when I worked in the coding boot camp space, we delivered curriculum to high school instructors to get credentials to teach techno, tech-based courses in their schools. And so I'm kind of curious if you could help me unpack a little bit, you know, I see something about staffing shortages. Do we have professional development pathways for instructors and educators and Virginia Beach staff to gain credentials and move into some of those shortage areas?
We do. So a couple of things. First off, our requirement of our Carl D. Perkins grant is that we use funding from that federal source for professional development for our teachers. So, you know, when I focus on like national conferences or, you know, more intensive training, it's often skill-based. We can teach folks how to teach, but sometimes those very technical skills are better coming from somewhere else. We definitely use that. We have a current partnership that is just wrapping up now, the end of six classes with Virginia Wesleyan University, where they took our CTE, provisionally licensed CTE teachers that we had at the start of last year, and we put them in a cohort, and they took master's-level courses with Virginia Wesleyan at a greatly reduced rate, and Mrs. Williams' Ad Hoc Committee helped find the funding for that, so we appreciate it. And so they got all six of their college courses that they needed to get off their provisional at no cost to those teachers, which helps us retain them because, you know, it's daunting. You come in as a new teacher, and now you've also got to take these courses, so that was huge for them. And actually, Wesleyan is now going to extend that offer, and our contract is up, but those teachers now have the opportunity to take four more courses on their own and finish the master's degree. So that's a boon for them, and I know I have a few that are planning to take advantage of that. And then we do a lot of technical training in-house. You often see my staff running, you know, safety classes, classes on how to use tools and machines for folks that come in maybe without some of the technical skills that we want them to have, because we have diverse technologies in our labs, and, and you know, maybe it's a little different than some of the things they used in their workplace. So it runs the gamut from local to state. Every one of our teachers gets the opportunity through the Carl D. Perkins grant, the funding I mentioned, to go to their state conference every year. And, you know, and then we rotate the, the bigger national convention, conferences and trainings. Obviously, that the cost on those is a little more, so, you know, that's something a teacher will do every once in a while in their career.
Thanks so much for sharing.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Melnick.
So I'm not going to thank you as a board member. I'm going to thank you as a business owner and say thank you for the exposure that you provide these students. We've been hiring CTE grads for over 40 years. My shop foreman, I think, '85, '84 grad, and so I appreciate that. I appreciate students who have a passion for something that they know about in high school and want to pursue that, that these opportunities are there for them, and that they might just be able to stay here in Virginia Beach and continue to live and work here, which none of the Melnick kids did, but I thank you.
And that's our, that's our hope.
All right. So I have, it's sort of a piggyback question on Ms. Rogers, but it doesn't seem to me, based on what you were saying, that it's needed, but is there ever been consideration, sort of like they do for college for early decision, this is my one, I will go to this one, I'm not applying for the other academies, I'm not applying for the other tech opportunities, I will go if I get it, type of scenarios?
That question might be bigger than me. I, I know it isn't something that, that I've considered. I, I do know that we get kids that apply a lot of places sometimes, and then they, you know, see where they get in, and they make their decisions, but I, I would have to defer to senior leadership on that. I don't know if that's been discussed.
It was kind of just a thought and a consideration, not really one that we need to discuss very much right now. But if you, you guys think that might be something worth considering, I definitely think that could maybe make sure that this, and our capacity is quite high in these programs. We have not nearly as many seats as applications, and so, you know, I was just looking at that 10% and whether or not we can get it closer to 100, and that was the reason that I had asked that. Thank you so much for everything that you guys have done with workforce development. I think that it's very clear from the comments here on the board that we support the workforce development, and I think that we've made excellent progress. Of course, you know, in education, we continue to try to make progress forward no matter what, and it looks like Dr. Robertson has something he wants to add, so.
Yeah, so, so if I could, you know, the, Mr. Callen and Ms. Rogers heard the state superintendent yesterday.
The state superintendent yesterday uh really applaud Virginia Beach for the work that we're doing in this area. But I also would draw your attention to a couple of things. So uh Dr. Lockett mentioned the Virginia Wesleyan height, the Virginia Wesleyan University Program. That's a direct result of the work of the Community Roundtable and the Ad-Hoc Committee. That would not have occurred without that. These aviation, the me- the the programs that that we're gonna be offering at Centura College, T C C and Aviation Mechanics Institute. A direct result of conversations at the Virginia Beach Community Roundtable. Our next meeting that we'll have, and Ms. Melnick is the board is the board representative on this. Is Sarah's gonna give a similar presentation in combination with Chesapeake City Public Schools. To explore how we might further expand from a regional approach into these these notions. So we are covering the the landscape because we also believe in this. And then a final shout out to Dr. Brower. So Dr. Brower today, uh as high school principals are getting into the master scheduling framework. He really did a nice job of talking to the high school principals on how critically important it is. That our students are maximizing the opportunities provided in the hybrid schedule. And that every one of those kids should be in six academic classes. Teachers should be teaching six academic classes. We need to, we we have opportunities. There's a what their work that Troy Walton has done at Bayside High School has maximized. His elective opportunities because of things he's done from a scheduling standpoint. And Dr. Brower got up in front of that group today and he challenged them to, again, look very closely at the master schedule. How we can fill these courses out and continue to expand opportunities for the three E framework. So a shout out to Dr. Brower because it goes well beyond what Dr. Lockett still.
Thank you.
And then um the last thing I just wanted to comment, not a question, so you're you can go ahead and sit down. I really like how we've worked to create and you've worked to create and cultivate partnerships. To really um make this work for our students here in Virginia Beach. And um the final comment is that when Dr. Coons was here, we were at. The Bayside Biofit. And she asked some of the students, you know, what do you like? And one of the students said, well, I like that. I was able to determine that this might not be what I wanna do for the rest of my life. So you know, we're really giving the students the opportunity to explore while they're in their K through twelve education. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
With that, we will now move on to our All In Virginia update. And I welcome Dr. Danielle Calucci, Chief Academic Officer.
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me to provide this All In uh Virginia update. Some of you know this very well by now, but I recognize um we have some new members. That will want to know about this critical funding source that Governor Yonkin has provided to school divisions across the Commonwealth. In September twenty twenty-three, the governor announced the All In Virginia Initiative. Uh which provided all divisions funding and recommendations on how to spend that funding. Uh to help school divisions address the Virginia Literacy Act, which was rolling out. Um and you know that we're engaged in all of the changes that that brought forth this school year. Chronic absenteeism as well as high intensity tutoring. Note that on the slide here, you see twenty percent was recommended to be spent on addressing the needs and the provisions of the law. The Virginia Literacy Act. Ten percent was to go to addressing chronic absenteeism. And seventy percent was to go towards high intensity tutoring. That was in grades three through eight. Um know that the state did provide some flexibility if divisions uh submitted or asked questions. Could we have a little bit more in tutoring or more in Virginia Literacy Act? And they did provide some of that flexibility to us. Twenty million dollars was given to us in Virginia Beach City Public Schools to address these. And so as you can see, this has made a tremendous difference over the last two years and these funds will carry over one more year. So uh we'll begin by uh talking a little bit and reviewing our tutoring approach. Uh before we received these funds, we did have a fairly robust um support system for tutoring in our schools. Through academic support, Title One funding and such. Uh but but the funding greatly um enhanced and expanded what we were able to offer. We've offered numerous hours. I believe the last report was over four hundred thousand hours of in-person tutoring. From teachers with our students or retirees that would come back and that we were able to compensate for tutoring our students. It also expanded summer learning, which is under the umbrella of high intensity tutoring. As well as um uh allowing us to purchase some programs. The state also provided some programs for us, such as Lexia that you see here, which is a foundational literacy skills program. That adapts to the needs of the learner. And as a review of the Virginia Literacy Act, you see some of the changes that that law brought forth to our school division. So I'll give you a moment to review those and I'll um briefly go through them as we've discussed them before together. So recall that uh we had to get school board approval for our Division Literacy Plan. The biennial report where the plan will come forth to you in about a month or two again. And it will have to include the changes that will go from fourth to eighth grade. The state is still working on releasing a little bit of finalized information that will inform that plan. But we're already busy working to complete that and present that to you soon. Uh we implemented the new standards of learning from uh the English Department and the Virginia Department of Education. Uh we adopted a new elementary textbook, uh which changed our curriculum. And we've continually been updating that in our assessment resources to align. We've provided multiple professional learning and support and coaching to help with that. And as you know, the state also released uh V D O E modules in partnership with U V A. And the Virginia Literacy Partnership Group. And our K eight teachers, E S L and special educators had to complete those modules. Um this school year. That was all part of the Virginia Literacy Act. And so with that came cost and they did provide funding to support the purchases we needed to purchase approved materials. For example, um we also get funding from the Early Initiative Reading Grant through the state. And the Vals screener is the screener I mentioned uh last week when we talked about some of the data from the Vals. And remember um that I said that any child in K three who would screen into the high risk band. Automatically then receives two and a half hours of intervention per week. And so the Early Literacy Grant provides that support. That's how we fund those tutors. So next school year, there will be additional changes as the law expands into our fourth through eighth grade. So we will be screening fourth through eighth graders, but it won't be a universal screener. Uh the state hasn't released their final screener, so we're not sure what the components will be. Or the components of the student reading plan or who will need to be screened yet. They haven't defined that for us yet. But the funding will support us um in moving forward. Once we have some of that final guidance from the state, we'll be able to plan around that. And that brings us to um attendance. So chronic absenteeism. This is the final component that we've addressed in Virginia Beach for all in. Schools continue to pull student response teams together to analyze attendance data for students at risk of chronic absenteeism. We're partnering with our families, teachers and students to encourage regular attendance and put intervention plans in place. Here you see some data on the screen and I would like to give you a moment to look that over. V D O E provided divisions the opportunity uh to provide flexible instructional time. Know that there were some restrictions around that. Uh it had to be delivered um in person by certified teacher, for example. We shared at the November School Board Meeting that we utilized funding also to contract with Everyday Labs. To expand support to school students and families who were um experiencing chronic absenteeism. And the additional funding the state provided allowed us to pull in multiple resources to address student needs and family needs. We also utilize the funds to address absenteeism by piloting an attendance ambassador program. Which Mister Jamison shared with you last year and Mister Delaney and I also have mentioned last year. Um Birdneck Elementary School was our first school. Um and they experienced a nine percent reduction in their chronic absenteeism through the second semester. So for this school, we have ten ambas- this school year, we have ten ambassadors now supporting students at four schools. Along with the Renaissance Academy. The ambassadors are retirees who formerly served as teachers, coaches. Um administrators and they've come back to help us make a difference and support our families. Um from improved attendance to classroom performance and higher levels of engagement within the school community. The ambassadors are making a positive impact. It is challenging to explain, so we have a short video for you. Um to see uh them at work and hear from them.
The ambassador program began about a year ago here at Birdneck Elementary. And the concept was to take retired teachers, coaches that have been extremely successful in their past. And to take their skills and bring them into a school where there may be selected students that were having difficulty. Uh that difficulty primarily stemmed from attendance issues.
The direct impact it had on the attendance is that it was almost an immediate change. In students who regularly miss school for one reason or the other, um that had that support in school. And the parents also had a connection with someone that would be assigned to the school to support their students. So our attendance improved drastically. But the funny thing we weren't expecting to happen that actually did. Is the behaviors. Behaviors turned completely around. And it was almost as if overnight, we saw a growth in development in students who simply struggled with the basics of social skills.
In my classroom, the attendance ambassadors uh really helped me focus on what I need to do with my students. And how I need to make sure that they're getting the curriculum and everything while they can come in and support me. And help me with those things, those social emotional skills that I don't always have time to really sit down and hone it on.
And uh we're excited about expanding the program to other schools and we expect to see success flourish in other places.
Okay. And finally, here is an update on the approximate spending from our grant's financial management team. Uh related to all-in spending. The figures displayed here represent estimates of remaining funds as of February twentieth. Um funds not spent by the end of this school year will carry over for one more year. These funds will support continued tutoring, uh the provisions of the Literacy Act. Purchasing more resources that are V D O E approved for literacy, um summer learning camps. Absenteeism and including supporting um the connected career connected platform uh that Dr. Lockett just mentioned. So we are available for questions. This is a partnership across offices. So um Mister Delaney is here as well if you have questions for school leadership.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick?
So clearly, All In Virginia was a heavy lift. I I understand that. It's not that I don't support it. But on slide four. You made two comments um with the um in regards to the information that you presented. One of them is that the state is still providing information and the other was that components are still missing, but funding is there. So I just wanna make sure that our teachers know that we understand, or at least I understand. That there are still things missing because they do feel, maybe they don't wanna say it this way, but they do feel like. They're building the plane while it's flying. And so I think it's a it's a fair comment to make. Like, when do you think it will all be together so that the people actually doing this work are feeling like? You know, we have the supports and all the information we need to do this with fidelity?
Well, I will say for the elementary level now, I do feel like we're very well informed and supported and um.
But is that because it's Virginia Beach?
Well, I am proud. I think we worked all together. School board, um D tall, docile, teachers, specialists, admin. I am proud of the work we did to pre-plan. Um but I do think we have all the information we need from the state at the elementary level um at this point. Um and we're waiting. Um the state has been very responsive. Um we even piloted the Vals in a couple of our middle schools. So there's a good partnership there. Um and they're working to finalize information and we should receive it. And as soon as we get it, um we're going to push out our plan for who to screen, how to manage that lift at the middle school level especially. And do our best to support.
So maybe I should say, when are you hoping to have all of the rest of this information?
Well, the sooner the better.
Yeah.
Um we did just receive an update from the state on the supplemental materials that have been approved. So that is one piece of information that greatly helps us. We can complete that part of the plan and look at our budget and remaining funds and all in. And so that was very helpful from them.
Okay.
Vice Chair Weems?
Yes, thank you. Um so the the attendance ambassadors, I'm assuming those are full-time positions and paid?
They're um temporary employee, part-time contracts from our retirees. So and it's paid through all in.
Okay, okay. That was my next question.
Everything that we discussed was.
And so and how much the money's going to be here next year from All In and then after that?
It sunsets if we don't use it. But I mean, they could expand it. That would be wonderful, but.
Cause if we, yeah, to to expand this, because you're looking at eve- just with the ambassador piece, you're looking at to expand it. It's gonna.
Yes.
Cost money. Ten ten per four schools means over a hundred for all of our schools. Okay, thank you.
I will add, Mrs. Weems, that the state did just release, they uh extended the contract that they're paying for Alexia. So that was good news because we had set aside some of this money for that. So they are supporting us in that way.
Ms. Rogers?
Thank you so much. Um quick question about absenteeism. Um is the state gonna be doing anything for some of our chronically ill students that so that they are not? I know that there's a big push to stop chronic absenteeism, which I'm not against. I'm just concerned that we do have students who are chronically ill, who are chronically absent because of their illnesses. And I wanna make sure that we're being um that we are allowed to be sensitive to their challenges.
Yes. So if Mister Delaney wants to add to that, there are some exceptions from the state. Um and we have resources to support home-based learning for students um in need of that support.
And and also she mentioned the flexible in-person tutoring that can remove some of that chronic absenteeism. Ms. Rogers, you're not talking a large number of students. It's gonna impact the school rating on that end. So more importantly is the school addressing the needs of that student through a variety of channels to ensure that they're getting the education they need. We're not as concerned about a state response there as we would be at the school level of keeping them current academically. So it's not a concern.
Alright, thanks.
Doctor Green?
Thank you. Dr. Calucci, I know in the past, our school's social workers have had a vital role. Um in school attendance and making sure we get our students involved in school and and parents. Um do they work anyway with the the mentors in this program or are they involved at all?
Yes, it's only at a few schools, but they are heavily involved in this. And Mister Jamison and Mister Wilson have provided professional learning. They're very much aware of this. And we just celebrated our social workers last week. Um but they are such critically important um people. In our students' lives and our families' lives. And so, yes, we have kept them informed. And they're working in partnership with the administrators at those schools.
So in some instances, they may do a home visit when we just can't um.
Yes.
Move that needle a little bit with getting someone to come to school.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Dwyer?
So I couldn't help but hear what that one teacher said with a big smile on her face. Behaviors. I wrote it down. Behaviors turned around like. Like, that's amazing to me, I was really impressed with that. And you said they were, you're talking about expanding programs for more of the schools. Currently, we have, how many schools did you say, four?
I believe four.
Okay. So with the funds that we currently have, is there room to expand?
There is room to expand, no. We just hope it's sustainable, so, because we won't have the funds after next year, but we're gonna do the best we can with them while we have them and make that difference.
Sounds good.
Okay, so I just have one question. So the texts and the emails that we get for students, what is the threshold that those are going out at? Because I am getting parents reaching out to me pretty regularly. My kid was sick, I told the school they were sick, I'm getting these text messages. So what do you have to say about that?
A few things I could say, but you asked the question about threshold. That threshold changes throughout the period. So we work, Mr. Jamison and I will meet with Everyday Labs. Usually, we had a meeting today, but we'll meet and see where that threshold goes. It starts very early, about a 5% threshold. If you've missed 5% of your classes, then it extends to a greater number as you get more into that at-risk category. So earlier in the year, it is kind of, what we're, they use the term, and I don't believe your people contacting you, Ms. Brown, are using the term nudge, but they use the term as a nudge. This nudge then seems to improve attendance and we have seen a drastic improvement, 70% of the kids that have received a nudge, their attendance improves as a result. So I'll get you the exact numbers of threshold that you may be looking for, but it adjusts as the year goes on to minimize those that get them. But we certainly understand, we have some that say, "We went on a trip, we told the school we were going on a trip," and we said, "Well, just, you know, you just got a little nudge, just a reminder that school's important," and that can be a challenge for some, I agree.
Okay, so the comment board is lighting up, so clearly I opened the can of worms, but I--
I'm terrible at that. I seem to do that with my comments.
I would say that for some families, they don't feel like it's as much of a nudge, and so I would just reiterate that if your child is sick, that they still need to stay home, because some families have indicated that they feel like they have to send their kids sick because of the nudges, and so we don't want whole classrooms getting ill with that. Mr. Bowens deal?
I just had a comment. I was at a school today, speaking with the principal, and she was telling me how excited she was about the Alexia program and the progress that she was seeing. So I just wanted to make a comment on that.
Thank you for sharing.
Mr. Cummings?
Yep, thank you. It's kind of ironic that I received a nudge right now as you're presenting, but--
Mr. Delaney, do you want to address that?
But no, my question, my question is, so you mentioned the program sunsetting, and so does that, does the sunset include like the platform, the automated texting, things like that?
Well, that's how we're funding it now, so if there weren't local funds available, some of those things would not be available after the funds are gone.
And if I heard correctly, I heard that there is a correlation between nudges and positive attendance, right? Yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah, we're seeing that and from a data standpoint, right now, we have no schools that are in the red for chronic absenteeism. Birdneck, the example you saw, for two consecutive years was sitting at about 25% of their students who were in that chronic absenteeism threshold. Right now, they're sitting right around 17%.
Yeah.
And we've seen, I think there's a variety of things, we saw the attendance ambassadors and others, but I think the comprehensive approach, we've seen some positive results.
I think that's great. I was excited to read that part about the, about nudges and attendance increase. I think, I don't know, do parents have a way to opt out, just to, is there a stop the opt-out feature within the system?
We certainly could probably look into that potential, yeah. It's possible, we've had a few, we've had that conversation. I will be, I know Ms. Brown said she's heard it, we haven't heard our principals say they're getting a ton of pushback on it right now, but we certainly can always find that opportunity to opt out. It does exist, is what I'm saying.
All right, cool. Thank you so much for sharing.
Ms. Rogers?
Hi, sorry. It actually wasn't about the attendance, although word lit up. My question actually is about all of the Virginia Literacy Act additions. I've been hearing from staff that this is a lot of work and we're having a lot of extra work come onto our, especially our K-8 teachers. Are we extending them as much support and/or ability to get caught up on this stuff? Because I think this is becoming a massive issue for a lot of staff, that they feel very overwhelmed with getting all of their extra training.
Modules.
Yes, thank you. My brain.
Yes, I think our principals at the elementary and middle level are completely invested in that and trying to keep a pulse on how it's going, how many does this teacher have done, and they're keeping track of that and offering support, coverage for substitutes and such to support them as much as they can to complete those before the school year begins, next school year.
Yeah, I want to make sure that we're not expecting that our staff is doing the modules over the summer on their own time, because again, this is for their job. We want to make sure that they're being given opportunities to do these before the summer. So I think that's like a focus for me, is that we're not asking our staff to do unpaid work.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Lynetti, do we have time to go into closed session?
To close session, in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings law set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraphs 1, 2, 7, and 8, is amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of a specific public officer, appointees, or employees of any public body. And evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Any teacher shall be permitted to be present during a closed meeting in which there is a discussion or consideration of a disciplinary matter that involves the teacher and some student and the student involved in the matter is present, provided that the teacher makes a written request to be present to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Nothing in this subdivision, however, shall be construed to authorize a closed meeting by a local governing body or an elected school board to discuss compensation matters that affect the membership of the such body or board collectively. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in its scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians, shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting if such student, parents, or guardians request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be convinced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, A, pending student investigations and complaints, B, pending employee investigations and complaints, C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Ms. Malnick. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for votes to approve the motion to go into closed session.
So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
So Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, the motion did pass to go into closed session.